Borninsky.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segras is in attendance. Slavens is apparently absent and Snyderman.
I am present.
Thank you. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda with the modification of item G1?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 25th, 2024?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Borninsky. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think it was Trustee Ganguly.
Oh.
Okay. I heard it from both sides.
I know.
Trustee Ganguly.
I didn't say anything.
Stevens pointing over there.
I thought it was you.
All right. Now we have public comment on agenda items only. On agenda items only. So public comment on agenda items only if you'd like to come to the podium for agenda items only. Other public comment is at the end of the meeting. Public comment for agenda items only in the room? No? Okay. Now I'm looking online. I see two people. If you want to speak in public comments, please raise your hand electronically. Okay. Public comment on agenda items is only. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Borninsky. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now, I don't see this. We have a nice thing to talk about here, starting off. A resolution. And some of our employees are here and some could not make it, but this is a happy day to talk about this anyways. So it's a resolution of the Board of Trustees from the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, recognizing Amber Leinberger, Audrey Roth, Evan Montezzi, Ben Van Horn, Gus Cardoso, Noah Solomon, and Tandip Singh. Whereas the Canton Fire Department recognizes that every minute counts during an emergency and quickly initiating CPR during a cardiac arrest saves lives. Whereas in April 6th, a guest at the summit on the park went into cardiac arrest on the basketball court. Whereas the incident was reported to Amber Leinberger, who calmly reassured the family of the patient. Whereas Audrey Roth brought the AED to the patient's side and helped provide CPR. Whereas Evan Montezzi provided CPR to the patient and managed the use of the AED. Whereas Ben Van Horn assisted with setting up the AED and helped provided oxygen to the patient. Whereas the crowd was controlled with the assistance of Gus Cardosa, who also guided emergency personnel to the scene. Whereas proper notifications were made and the aquatic center closed and additional crowd control was provided by Noah Solomon. Whereas emergency personnel were guided to the scene by Tandip Singh, who assisted with crowd control and helped the fire department take the patient to the ambulance. We also had some of our public safety members there also. Sergeant Kymig, Officer Seifert, Officer Hayford, Officer Perhota. And I didn't, if you want to add the names also of the fire personnel that were there.
I'll have to get those for you.
Okay, thank you. Whereas these staff members were able to remain calm and act immediately during a life-threatening situation. Resolve the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, upon recommendation of the Director of Fire Services, does hereby recognize Amber Leinberger, Audrey Roth, Evan Montezzi, Ben Van Horn, Gus Cardosa, Noah Solomon, and Tandip Singh for their commendable contribution to the Canton community along with Sergeant Kyming, Officer Seifert, Officer Hayford, Officer Perhota, and the fire personnel which we will add also.
Support.
Motion made by itself, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So can those people please come up? Those young people, please come up along with officers? So Director Holmberger, oh, he's here. I don't know if you have certificates now or, okay, we will get them to the. So I will ask if Greg or any of our public safety or leisure services directors want to say anything, but these young people helped save the life of a young man, 17 years old. He was going to try to come today, but he was unable to. I think he might come. We don't know, but. You did outstanding work. You kept everybody calm and cool and you helped save his life.
Yeah, I was going to say, the Canton Fire Department can't do this without citizens and employees stepping up and taking control of the scene before we get there. Like, we said in the resolution, every second counts. And without placing that AED and starting to do CPR and doing those things, I learned today that this child is out of the hospital. He's walking with the assistance of a cane. And I mean, that's an amazing feat right there. And we probably see that a few times in our career, right? So that's a wonderful thing to have. And it's all due to you guys starting that care prior to our arrival. So thank you for that. And we certainly appreciate you as employees of the township and being members of the community here. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just reiterate, Director Stockline said that we're incredibly proud. We're very appreciative. I see you all and the rest of the lifeguard staff constantly going through routines and going through trainings just before I came over here. The lifeguard staff that's on duty right now was going through in-service training. And you all, if you all don't know, they're required to go through a minimum of four hours of training every month. If they don't get their four hours in, then they're pulled off the schedule until they make up those hours. And those hours and hours and hours of training certainly pay off in these situations where you have to use those skills that you hope you'll never use. So thank you.
I'm going to speak for a second, so thank you, of course. But I just got word that the family's almost here. So when you see the folks come in, we'll know who they are. And it's a little preview of the celebration when you get to see them walk in. So, congrats.
So when they come in, we'll bring them up again for a picture for you guys. Thank you. Good job, everybody. So please, please stay. The family's on the way. Jason, did you want to say anything? No? Okay. So let us know when they get here. Thank you. So please have a seat in the front row and get them up here. Thank you. Right in the front row where we can see you. Good news. It's very good news. It's wonderful news that the family member's coming too. All right, why don't we do? They're walking. Okay, so wait a second. Yes. Yes. You guys never thought you'd do this, right? Yes. What's that? I know. You never think it's going to happen, but you're ready. Good training. LS lifeguard training is good training. It's very good training. I took it a long time ago. Yeah, Abossa. Would you like to come to the front of the room here and have a seat? Why don't we read the resolution again, just so you can hear what we said? These young people in front, you might not recognize them, are the ones that we're going to read about as well as the officers in the back of the room. So this is Abossa and his family. Nice to meet you and congratulations. So we just want to read to you a little about these people in case you want to hear what we said. So whereas the Canton Fire Department recognizes every minute counts during an emergency and quickly initiating CPR during a cardiac arrest saving life. Whereas on April 6th, a guest at the summit, Abossa, went into cardiac arrest on the basketball court. The incident was reported to Amber Leinberger. Amber, want to raise your hand? Who calmly reassured the family of the patient. Whereas Audrey Roth brought the AED to the patient's side and helped provide CPR. Whereas Evan Montezzi provided CPR to the patient and managed the use of the AED. Whereas Ben Van Horn, is Ben here? No. Assisted with setting up the AED and helped provided oxygen to the patient. Whereas the crowd was controlled with the assistance of Gus Cardosa, who also guided emergency personnel to the scene. Whereas proper notifications were made, aquatic center closed, and additional crowd control was provided by Noah Solomon. Whereas emergency personnel were guided to the scene by Tandip Singh, who assisted with the crowd control and helped the fire department take the patient to the ambulance. Who also was there in the back of the room, we have Sergeant Kymig, Officer Seifert, Officer Hayford, and Officer Perhota. So we gave your resolution to everybody. We're very happy of everything they have done. Would you like to say any words, anything at the podium or you can, Abossa, or the family members? No pressure. Or you don't have to. We could just take a picture with them coming around you.
Even though this is very unexpected for me this evening and I am so much blessed. That's the word I would like to use. I don't like using lucky. I am so much blessed to have this crew around and at the particular time. Because I was out of town. I was in Maryland. I went there to go celebrate my 50th birthday. I really wanted to go to the White House. That was my main reason of leaving the town. I said, I've been in this country for almost 20 years. I've never been to the White House. And I said, that's going to be my 50th celebration. And while I was there, I got a call from, and before he went to the summit, he called me and took permission from me because that's the rule. You don't leave the house without letting me know where you're going. And I actually gave him the permission of going there. And two hours later, I got a call from the younger brother stating that he passed no pause. At that time, the only thing I know to do is to call on God Almighty. I prayed. I reached out to my church, Brightmont Christian Church in Novi, and a lot of them started praying. And the pastors, the youth pastor for OB and some of my friends, they all drove down there. And thank God that, I don't know the word. I am overwhelmed. And thank you all. I really appreciate all that you guys do. I appreciate your services and God bless you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, where you are sitting, is it okay if they come around you and we'll take a picture of the hall view together? So he just. Okay, so Abossa doesn't have to get up. Okay. You guys want to go stand around him? If you can make it up here, you can do it. It might be easier, but I don't know. Get the mom in too. Congratulations again, everyone. We're glad you're better, Abossa. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Everyone's welcome to stay to listen to a board meeting, or you. You can, you're welcome to, yeah. No, thank you for coming. Thank you. All right, thank you. That was nice. The next item on the agenda is, well, before we start the consent calendar, we're going to have a little update from John Selmy, from our DPW team on our trash situation, trash update right now. Now, you're going to do it? Okay.
I'll start.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. As you know, a process we started over a year ago to change our waste hauler. We began this in June of 2023. Normally, when we do a change, or we're going to continue service in the contract extended, we go through a process of negotiation, maybe some amendments, some give back and forth, and we use the same waste hauler. But that wasn't the case last year, as some of you probably recall all too clearly. We were having, we were struggling with GFL. So we made a decision to go out for, expose our services to the market and see if we can get some different waste haulers. So that happened in September of 2023, and the responses came back in November of 2023. And then we got three responses. One from Titan, one from GFL, and one from Priority Waste. We specifically heard from Waste Management and from Stevens, which is a company south of here. They were not interested in participating. So with that, with the three respondents, we held a study session with the full board where we interviewed and they did a presentation on what their services are going to provide. And at that time, we made a selection to go with Priority, and that happened in February. And I provided a memo to some of these dates and times. And then we started the process of more notifying the residents of Canton. We had a know-how meeting that focused actually on building department stuff, but we actually teased the May meeting about the new waste hauling. So we had a meeting at the summit, a neighborhood know-how meeting, where we had, Emma will correct me, probably 30 different associations there. Maybe not that many. Yeah, approximately 30. So we brought the new, because the biggest change in the service is going to be, the garbage was now going to go into a cart. The rest of the service was not going to change. We're going to have the recycling cart and still had yard waste. Also, I was, it was pretty clear to me that there was residents who, and associations and management companies had some issues with the size cart. And I went on, I call it my trash talking tour, and I went, met with over 30 neighborhood associate HOAs and different management companies, different, and learned that there's clearly places in the township that require smaller carts. Either one-car garage, or they had no garage, or had hardly any place to put something. So we worked pretty closely with these associations, got approval to provide only 64 carts, 64 gallon carts for them. And Priority was cooperative with that. So then unbeknownst to us, the process, Priority was going through a process of procuring GFL's assets. And that happened within the last month or so. And they started transitioning to Priority Waste taking over GFL's assets on July 1st, which happens to be also when the carts started getting, which is actually a little earlier than we expected. That probably didn't help with our education with the residents about this changeover. But regardless, they have now taken over GFL and Canton and 78 other communities in southeast Michigan. With that being said, we are still on track for July 29th for our transition, full transition to GFL, I mean, to Priority Waste with the, with carts. I mean, the garbage carts, also with new trucks. And they have still continued to let us know that they're going to be meeting our, what we required in our RFP in our contract is to not have pickup on Saturdays, but have pickup of the yard waste on regular trash pickup days. So I know that the Public Works Manager, John Selmy, is here also. I know you probably may have questions or there's other information we need to share. But we are on track for July 29th, the changeover to the carts. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I know that we're going to kind of handle this. The board will ask some questions and then any, John Selmy is here. If anybody wants to talk about their personal situation, they can go with him in the lobby and talk about that. And we also have public comment at the end. But like you said, right now, we're experiencing the takeover of GFL from Priority. That's what we're experiencing right now. And I know the latest that went out because of the rain that we're going to be having, which is starting, we were asking people that you can cover your yard waste or bring it up at least to the garage. I know I ran home and pulled mine up into the garage just because of the rain. And we will pick that up on Saturday.
Correct.
They're concentrating right now on trash and recycling.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I know we have a lot of questions. Any, go ahead.
So are we, I understand we are getting a lot of calls from residents. Is it mostly about yard waste pickup? Or is it recycling and other waste too? Because I know there was a holiday weekend involved in the last week.
It didn't help us, right? Yeah.
Yeah. So is this mostly yard waste pickup?
General.
So yes, the majority of the calls right now are yard waste. Last week was a holiday week. Bad time to transition from one company to another in a short week. But mainly yard waste from last week that didn't get picked up. Some areas didn't get the recycling done. So they've got all that caught up from last week. So now the calls, like the supervisor said, yard waste in bags, people are concerned because of the rain. So we put out a message today to pull it back, if you can, you know, to help keep it dry, especially if it's in a bag. If it's in a can, it's fine, right? So, but yes, so the administrative staff at DPW have done kudos to them because the phone has not stopped ringing since 7:30 Monday morning. So.
So the yard waste till the 20, till the, till the new contract takes over on the 29th will still be on Saturdays?
Will continue on Saturdays to the end of what was GFL's contract, on the 29th. When we technically switch to Priority under our new contract, they are going to pick it up on your regularly scheduled day. That's what's been communicated to us.
Summer?
So the yard waste was supposed to be picked up last Saturday, right? And so there is additional yard waste that's going to be accumulated this week that is supposed to be picked up this coming Saturday. So in some places, you're going to have twice as much yard waste. My faith in Priority's ability to be able to do all of that on Saturday is not very high right now. So what is the plan? And additionally, we are expecting rains and floods towards the end of this week. And I think that will have an impact on pickup. So what is the plan?
So first, the pickup for compost last week was for Sunday because they already did behind because of the holiday. They were off on Thursday. So regular scheduled trash was picked up on Saturday, and then the compost was up on Sunday. I spoke to Priority this afternoon. They assured me that all compost will be picked up on Saturday. So they are aware that, I mean, they're in the business. They know that some areas, it's going to be double, right? If they didn't get it last week and people cut their grass again, it's going to be double, perhaps, right? It's been pretty dry, so hopefully the compost might be down a little bit. With the storms, we can't predict that, right? And in all fairness to Priority, I mean, they're taking over somebody else's contract. And, you know, I don't know the timing was the best for anybody, but they are working diligently to address that.
I understand that. With respect to Priority, though, they chose to take over another company's contracts, right?
I don't disagree with that. But, you know, three days on the, or eight days on the jobs, or seven days on the jobs. So we got to give them a second too, so.
Yeah, I mean, I knew that coming into this, it was going to be kind of a lift to make sure that everything ran smoothly. I think with the timing and the takeover of the GFL contracts didn't make it easier. But I think Priority needs to understand that, like, residents are evaluating the quality of their service right now, and they aren't happy.
And take the name off of that hauler. If it was still GFL, I think we'd still be in the same position, to be honest with you. Because they inherited their equipment. And as we all know, their equipment is weak at best. So that's one of their biggest challenges, right? They inherited, or part of the deal, they got 177 pieces of equipment. Of that 177, 80 of them were not running. So that put them right behind, right out of the get-go. So they're working diligently to get those trucks repaired. I know they have gone out and rented more trucks, and this is just not a Canton thing. It's the whole region thing. So, but.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions because I spend time in this building on a daily basis. And so I get a lot of my questions answered in those kind of conversations. My first bit of advice is, especially when dealing with large groups of people, like the 35,000 individuals who participate in the solid waste program, routinely changing the dates and the times of when things occur is a great way to lose people. It's a great way to cause confusion. When I move a voting location, the consequences from one, moving a voting location once will reverberate through three or four election cycles because of the lack of. I think about voting every day. You know, you guys probably think about trash every day. The average person is thinking about sports, work, their lawn, all the other competing things that they have. And so like, they don't necessarily pay attention to the dates of June 29th. Or Saturday this week, but Sunday next week, but Saturday back next week for two weeks, and then we're going to go to your normal week after that. That's a great way to overly confuse people. But I do know we are triaging and trying to handle this. So my, that's my one bit of advice is sticking to something as consistent as possible. My second thing I want to say is, you know, I am a little bit resentful, but not at Priority Waste. Obviously, I am questioning their business decision to absorb all of GFL, especially at a time when they were transitioning into the automated service here in Canton Township. But I'm resentful at GFL because they did a poor job managing that contract. We had to go look for services elsewhere, predominantly because of increased costs and decrease in service. And their service got progressively worse. What's problematic is last week was so bad, it's almost like we're going to, people are going to have rose-colored glasses over what GFL service was like for the last couple of years, or the last couple of months, or the last couple of weeks. It was atrocious. It was inexcusable. And I think they set Priority up for failure. I look forward to us working with Priority to address these issues so that we can stabilize this and not be reactive and change the dates this week and change the dates next week and so on and so forth. But actually get to the fundamental issues. And there's some fundamental issues with the industry as a whole that are also challenging. So I'm less reactive to the temporary transition that occurred last week, which was already an anomaly in that we had a major holiday and the township offices weren't open on Friday. So I'm cutting them a little bit of a slack on that. But I will tell you, you know, two weeks is a long time to have yard waste outside, especially during the rain. And so I do empathize with people who have that level of frustration. Personally, our recycling was not picked up last week on the day it was supposed to, but it's recycling. I just left it out and I moved on with my life. And it got picked up a couple of days later. My garbage was picked up on the correct day. My garbage day is today, and my garbage was picked up really early this morning. I put it out last night. It was picked up really early. So my route is looking pretty darn good right now. And luckily, I don't participate in the yard waste program because I keep all of my yard. waste on my own property because it's good for my plants. So I hope that we get that under wraps for folks. I do empathize with the frustration people have because two weeks is a long time to go without yard waste pickup. But, but again, I do think we are in this mess because of GFL and luckily, we have proven to Priority that if we are unsatisfied with services, we are willing to look elsewhere regardless of how challenging that is. So if they do not triage this and get it fixed, they, they, they can't expect that we would sit on a contract when we don't get the services we're paying for.
And if I may, just a couple of things. The communications, I agree with you 100%, but I, kudos to our communications team. They do a heck of a job, right? But not everybody's on the, you know, we don't have everybody's phone number, we can't call, you know, 30,000 homes, right? Or businesses, whatever it may be. But our communication team does an amazing job, right, to get that done. And secondly, in this transition, one positive takeaway for me personally is the person that was, the route manager for GFL, has transitioned over to Priority and they've made him a territory manager. So he's well-versed in Canton. Canton's a very difficult community. It's not a standard grid system, a lot of cul-de-sacs, you know? So it's tough to learn, right? So they've kept the same drivers, but it's key to have the person that's overseeing them that is very familiar with Canton. So the one positive so far, so.
Thank you. Stephen?
Thank you. I won't reiterate the comments of my colleagues. The thing that I was looking forward to was July 29th as a cutover date. And so just to make sure I'm clear and understanding that we are not using the new technology that was promised in the contract that we signed with Priority yet and not until the 29th, is that correct?
That's correct, because they inherited the GFL equipment that didn't have that technology.
But we will be starting July 29th, because if I remember correctly, it was new trucks with cameras on the trucks. I don't know if it was termed artificial intelligence, but learning as you go and a data center or control center that was operating, not remotely, but controlling. That'll all be.
That's all in play.
July 29th. I think the sad part is that Priority probably now has used up some of the goodwill that they probably would have had if things didn't go perfectly starting on July 29th by doing this, by taking over a broken system and calling it their own and, and essentially giving themselves bad press right off from the start.
If they could have waited August 1st, it would have been a little bit more favorable for us, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would appreciate if you could communicate that to them because, I mean, we want it, we, we've set expectations in such a way that yes, there could be a learning curve starting this new system, but now they've already used up some of that, of our citizens, the public's generosity. So they need to be sharp starting July 29th.
Don't disagree. And, and also as part of the contract, there's some things in there that are a lot more tighter than the previous contract. So there are some things that Deputy Supervisor Havers is working on to finalize the contract. So I mean, those, those things are in that contract, so we have something that's binding. The last contract was pretty, you know, was from 20, 25 years ago, so.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Is the first one is, did we know that as of July 1st that Priority was going to be picking up?
There were some rumors on the, out on the streets. I think it was announced at the Mackinac Policy, actually, is the one that became public. So, what was that, mid-May?
End of May, last week.
Late, end of May?
May 31st.
That's when they announced it, so.
I mean, I knew that they were buying GFL. What I'm wondering is, did we know that the Priority trucks were going to be out in our neighborhoods starting July 1st?
Oh.
Okay.
Because, you know, we were on the assumption GFL is going to out of the contract. We had no knowledge that behind the scenes Priority and GFL were working a deal.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I, I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything because I didn't know until I saw a Priority truck in my neighborhood and that was confusing.
It's very confusing for some of the residents, hence some of the calls too, right?
Right.
And then a cart shows up.
Right. And I think that is also, you know, just this whole process over the last week or so has been extremely confusing. To, to your point about recycling being caught up, we have had an email just this evening that a gentleman, you know, in his neighborhood still doesn't have recycling picked up. And, you know, he's wondering when that's going to happen. I think also, you know, like my neighborhood, we're Thursday pickup, so of course it was going to be a day late this week, last week. But nothing was picked up on Friday. I think on Saturday, our garbage was finally picked up and then yard wa, or not yard waste, because that hasn't been picked up. Recycling was finally picked up on Sunday. So it's confusing for, for me and I think for other residents to know when to pick, you know, when to report a missed pickup and how to do that if you're not even sure when it's going to be picked up at all.
Well, we still have the reporting tool online, still use that.
Yeah, I found, I found it.
Yeah, and you can call us, right? We send a daily list over to Priority now of missed pickups. We send it directly to the route supervisor.
And that's, I'm not bashing DPW at all. I completely understand it's, it's probably extremely busy right now with, with all of the calls. I, I just, I feel like we're getting a lot of excuses from Priority and the residents want results. They don't care about excuses.
Nobody disagrees with that.
Yeah. So, you know, just want to make sure that we get our communication better, but we also need to ask Priority to make sure they're communicating with us better because to, you know, just all of a sudden have trucks show up that we didn't know were going to be coming, I think is kind of ridiculous, actually. So, anyway, but thank you for all the information you gave us tonight.
You're welcome.
I have one last question. So I, I'm still a little confused that, you know, Priority, isn't Priority using their tools that they already have for this or their, I don't know how that works, like, you know, you have, you know that you're going to start on 1st of July internally. Are you not, are they not using the tools that they have in hand to do this? Is, like, you know, I'm not talking about the trucks, I'm talking about, you know, their data center that they talked so much about during their, during the, you know, when they did our presentation. That's, that's my main concern, that aren't they using their strengths that they already have and already when they're starting, they have, it's a, I would say this is a soft start of their contract, right? Like, because they have picked up GFL stuff and so that's, that's one of the concerns that I have, that why are not, why aren't they using their, like, it's, it's, they decide to use their data centers on the 29th itself? I'm sure they knew that they were doing this on the 1st of July intern.
Well, I, I don't know internally what they were doing, but the equipment that they acquired from GFL was not equipped with that technology.
Yeah.
So they are slowly outfitting some of that equipment, but by the time they do that, our contract, our new contract will start with them, right? We will have that technology. They are going to be coming to the board next meeting to, to discuss that. We'll have some people hear from Priority and, you know, so that way you can hear it from them and not from me.
Yeah, so, yeah, and thank you so much for coming today and explaining the details of, because, you know, a lot of people are confused, a lot of, like, you know, I had a homeowner in my neighborhood put out his Priority waste bin out, out this week and, and like, you know, I informed, like, all the homeowners associations, people were informed, but, you know, if you see a Priority truck and you have a Priority bin, you're making the assumption that, okay, Priority is picking up my waste. And so that confusion is what is causing a lot of discontent within, and I, I am, I really, really am sorry and I sympathize with the residents on what has happened, but it's, it's just a bit of a communication from them would have helped. And I would really hope in the future that they communicate better with us. Like, it's like, we expected, like, when we, when we saw what they were willing to offer to us, the state-of-the-art data center and things like that, we really expected like a higher quality service. And I understand they're catching up, but I made an assumption, being a person who, you know, we, in the, in the corporate world, you know, you use your, even when you are doing mergers and acquisitions, you're going to use your strengths to help with your product. So it's like, I would say, like, in the future, we would like to have a little bit of a better communication from them and not suddenly being put in place as to what's going on. There's a lot of confusion this week and, and I understand the frustration of our residents.
And the communication is a huge thing. We, we have some, we have sent out communications to the HOAs.
Yeah, we did, we did what we had to do and we, we are putting out, you know, information out there, but if we knew this a little bit, like, two days, three days ahead of time, we could have, I guess we could have done better, I think, yeah.
You know, maybe a month or two would have been great.
Yeah, I understand.
This is not how we planned this to roll out, I assure you that.
I understand.
We worked very hard on this. We started over a year ago, planning this and how this is going to roll out and how it was going to look. And then, you know, 30 days out, oh, by the way, we just absorbed this company, right? So they already dug themselves a pretty good hole right out of the gate, right? So they'll have some explaining to do when they come here in two weeks.
Yeah, I understand. But thank you so much for coming today and talking.
I'm just wondering about the form where folks can report a missed pickup. Can we make sure to put that on our social media sites? And if there's a phone number that people can call, put that on the social media sites as well, just so it's easily accessible to residents so they don't have to go digging around the website for it?
We can do that. It's been out there, but we can, we can re-blast it for sure.
Kate?
Yes, sorry, I forgot one of my, my items I wanted to ask about. I, I did receive a concern from a resident earlier today who is, like many of us, concerned about waiting the two weeks for yard waste pickup. And I know Summer went into that. But his point was that, you know, it, there's a choice between leaving it outside and the bags getting all soggy from the rain and maybe then when they come to pick them up, they fall apart, or the possibility that he brings it into his garage and the yard waste starts decaying and then there's a smell. So I'm not quite sure what he will end up doing. I know we brought ours in before it started raining, but we only had one bag, we didn't have a lot. Just, you know, if, you know, residents have a quandary at this point, like, what would they do? And I'm not asking you to solve that for them and I just think that Priority needs to think about that.
You speak to other communities, I know that you experienced from other communities and we know, we've seen Dearborn, Livonia, I mean, they're all going through the same thing. But do you know that, are they doing the same thing in the other communities where they're just taking over the GFL trucks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. You know, and just before this merger, they, they onboarded the city of Detroit, 270,000 customers, Sterling Heights, 40,000 customers, right? That was all new startup stuff, right? Within the last two months. And then they transitioned to this deal, took on 70 cus, 70 communities plus like over 700 HOAs on top of that, you know? So I'm not one to judge, but the timing and probably to Michael's point, right, the timing was not the best and I don't know, I don't know where their due diligence was, to be honest with you, but that's my opinion.
Right, so, I mean, we know that the, the trucks that they're using today are not the trucks they're going to be using in August, right? Because we're using, we're getting automated trucks, they're different, those are their trucks. Right now, they're using GFL's trucks.
Not always.
Were, were the trucks in good shape? Just out of curiosity, when Priority took them over?
The ones that service Canton, I would say no.
No. There were reports of missing axles?
Yeah, there was.
Damage to the vehicles that occurred over a one to two week period?
Eighty different trucks.
They were just like piecemeal and parts from one truck to another. It's like they, you know, somebody knew behind the scenes that we're not going to invest any more capital here, not just here, but in the operations of residential services? Because obviously, there was a deal behind the scenes that was pending. That's my, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I know, Emma, you've been very, thank you for all your help too. I know you've been answering a lot of questions and getting things out to the HOAs quickly. Any other questions or comments? And of course, this is a, this is a living story.
Stay tuned.
Please do. But yes, I, so I went home.
More to come.
I brought mine in and I know we're telling the HOAs, blasting that out, we put it on our Facebook page, you know, at least pull it close to the house or something, or you can even cover it where it is too, you know, maybe put plastic under it or put it in a And help your neighbors too. I know some people have called and said they had, they have trouble doing it, so maybe they could help each other out also. Call us if you need help, we can send someone to help.
And reporting a missed pickup is on the front page of the Canton Township website right now as we speak. So if you don't find it on Facebook, you don't see it on social media, if you go to cantonmi.gov, report a missed pickup is right there on the main page.
I also believe there's a link right to Priority also in that.
Yes, and that's in FAQs also. So with that, if anyone wants to speak to John out in the hall, you can do so on this if you want to talk about your personal questions or you can wait till public comment also. All right. Thank you, thank you, John. Thank you, Dave. Thank you very much. Yep. All right, next on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider second reading and adoption of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding Grand River Road, Brighton LLC rezoning. C2, consider approving the annual payment of Western Wayne County Fire Department Mutual Aid Association dues. And finally, item C3, consider approval of contract extension for fiscal year 2021, 2022 Wayne County Park Village.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Boransky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G1, consider approval of donation agreement to acquire property located northwest of Cherry Hill Road and North Ridge Road and approval of drainage easement agreement.
And I'm going to be reading the, from the RBA that is physically in the back, is different from the packet, and every trustee has an updated one. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the donation agreement for the acquisition of approximately 2.953 acres of land located on the east side of the subject tax parcel as described in the donation agreement and supplemental documents and to authorize the township supervisor to sign all documents necessary to complete the acquisition, the drainage easement on the subject tax parcel as described in the drainage easement agreement and supplemental documents and to authorize the township supervisor to sign all documents necessary and the attached resolution.
Report.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Consent to the board is being sought to acquire 2.953 acres of land located on the east side of parcel as listed via a donation agreement. The subject property is located northwest Cherry Hill Road and North Ridge Road between the Human Services Center and the creek. The property includes stormwater ponds, which are proposed to be enlarged as part of the town square, Canton Town Square at Cherry Hill Village redevelopment project. That's, Deputy Director, Deputy Joe, do you want to add anything?
Just a quick reminder, this is the property in Cherry Hill Village between the Human Services Building and what we often refer to as the Triangle Parcel on Ridge as you travel towards Ford Road. As the RBA says, this property is being proposed to build two large water features in Cherry Hill Village, which will also act as stormwater ponds and will become a part of the Canton Town Square.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider approval for the temporary addition of one full-time laborer position for the Department of Public Works.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the temporary addition of one full-time laborer position for the Department of Public Works.
Court. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The Department of Public Works is looking to add one full-time laborer position that will work in the Stormwater Drains Department. Currently, the Public Works staff is operating short staff since late 2022 due to multiple short-term and long-term disabilities and two more employees will be out on FMLA. The Department of Public Works is seeking to add one laborer to staff in order to be staffed appropriately. If the individuals that are currently on the LTD are able to return to work, we will not displace the newly added laborer position. We will retain the laborer and use that position to fill the next labor vacancy. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. This is a strategy we've employed in the past when we had folks who were on long-term disability and the future didn't look good that they would come back because of their situation. So we, we're somewhat jumping the gun as far as bringing somebody on to help out DPW. We did this in facilities too, so this is what we're looking at to make sure that John has what he needs to get the work done in Public Works. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3, consider increase of existing purchase order to R&amp;R Asphalt Incorporated for Heritage Park Path Improvements.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an increase to existing purchase order referenced above by $344,735 for R&amp;R Asphalt Incorporated to complete the Heritage Park Path Improvements.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. Engineering Services is requesting an increase of a purchase order 2024 to R&amp;R Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $40,000 for path repair behind Summit Fitness Center, $259,735 for the Heritage Park Path Improvements, and $45,000 contingency for a total increase of $344,735. And the budgets are available in the Capital Outlay Land Improvements and the Capital Outlay Land Improvement Project is listed. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Just our paving contract, we've had some challenges over the past 18 months or so. We've been pretty happy with the work this contractor's been doing. Has finished one, nine holes at the Pheasant Run satisfactorily. We're looking forward to getting this work done at Heritage and then going back to Pheasant Run in August when the, the ground is a little hard there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hoenberger and I went out to look at the golf course path and looks like a good job. Actually, we got a lot of compliments when we were out there. People saying they, they're happy that they don't have to, they save their back now from all the bumps that they were on before. Anything to add? Steven?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate taking something that we've done so recently and not going through a whole nother process that would be lengthy when we already knew that we were getting good pricing from this vendor and they were already doing a good job in our community.
Yeah, I have to give also kudos to Finance and Mike Shepherd, our purchasing agent, and Director Trumpel for this effort.
And I'd just like to say, I think this is a good use of the Wayne County Parks Millage dollars that we get back because of our agreement with Wayne County. By not having any of the larger Wayne County parks in Canton, a lot of times it's hard when you get your tax bill and you pay that tax, knowing that it's going to be spent in other communities. And so getting that money back and knowing that that money is going to Heritage Park.
Thank you. Director Hoenberger, do you want to add anything?
We're just excited to get the work done and see some improvements out there, because it's definitely needed, so we're, we're very excited.
All right, thank you. Kate?
Yeah, just a, a hopefully a quick question. I see in the contract amendment, it says that there's the removal of old portion, portions of the old path and addition of previously uninstalled paths. And I'm just wondering what the previously uninstalled paths are, where they are.
I can take that. There's a, there's a small section on the west side of the, the tree line that connects the, the north and south portion of the park. There's a small section where it's kind of a dirt path that goes through the trees right there. We use it a lot for Liberty Fest, for access for vehicles. So that is going to be added, just going to become paved and connect those two sections.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace the rooftop unit four at the administration building.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and approve a purchase order for Quality Air Systems in the amount of $177,000 to replace RTU four at the administration building.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Rooftop unit four is over 23 years of age with an original projected lifespan of 15 to 20 years. In recent years, the performance of the unit has been declining and has experienced a few issues related to the functions of the unit, including its ability to properly cool the space. This unit is considered a critical infrastructure unit due to the area it cools. The main ITI serves room for the township and the police dispatch nine emergency phone lines. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't, I don't have anything to add, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Kate?
Is this unit the one that we were having trouble with just this week?
No, it's a different one. We're working on that one. We're at 50% rate.
All right. Yeah, how is that, how is that one doing? Because I, I had a conversation with John yesterday and he said, that's not the unit. I had the exact same question.
No, it's not the one we're, we're changing out here. But we need to keep ITI cool, because if it doesn't, we have, we'll have definitely issues.
The data center is okay.
Okay, all right.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace seven exterior doors at the Parks and Maintenance Building.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and purchase order for overhead door company in the amount of $24,640 to replace exterior doors at the Park Maintenance Building.
Court. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Beginning in 2024, the Board of Trustees adopted a capital improvement plan, which included the replacement of exterior doors at the Parks Maintenance Building. The existing doors are mostly original to the building. After 20-plus years of use and exposure to inclement weather conditions, many of the doors have rusted and are unable to be secured properly. And the cost for the overhead doors, including the contingency, are budgeted in this, the account for capital outlay buildings and improvement. So Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add, but happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the doors? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G6, consider approval of application for the 2024 Environmental Justice Impact Grant.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize submission of the application to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Environmental Justice Impact Grant towards the planting and maintenance of trees within the subject census tract and to accept the funds if awarded and the follow, and to approve the attached resolution.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Borninski. Planning Services seeks approval to apply for Michigan Department Environment, Great Lakes and Energy administered Environmental Justice Impact Grant to be implemented in '25, '26, and '27. The application for the grant will provide Canton with additional funds to purchase diverse species of trees and maintain existing trees in Canton's most environmentally distressed census tract. This grant does not require matching funds because all the work will be located within an eligible disadvantaged area. The Municipal Services Department recommends approval of application for Environmental Justice Impact Grant to assist with expansion of the tree canopy and associated benefits within Census Tract 5649, which is bounded by Michigan Avenue to the north, I-275 to the east Bellville Road to the west municipal boundary to the south. Director Norwood, do, yeah, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add, but Community Planner Patrick Sloan is also here. Answer any questions, as he manages our urban forestry program.
Patrick, do you have anything to add?
We have nothing else to add, except Zach Michel is in our office. He's been overseeing the tree planning program and he became aware of this grant and has been diligently working on the information and background to apply for the grant. So he's on the lookout for any grant that can help Canton Township and help our tree inventory. So we're excited about the prospects for this grant and we're hopeful that we get something and we can start making a difference in that census tract.
Very good, thank you. Questions or comments? Kate?
Just a comment. I, I think this is, is wonderful. Anytime that we can find a grant like this, I hope we can take advantage of it and I hope we get it. And I, I think it's just great that, that Zach found this and that we're doing this. Thank you.
Will we be doing this on, I assume township-owned property?
If we can, we could do that on township-owned property. We could do that within public roads, road rights of way with county permission. We could potentially also do it on private properties such as mobile home parks with the permission of the private property owner. So my understanding is there's a few different options in terms of locations.
I like that.
Kate, Summer?
Just to echo, Trustee Borninski, this is really cool. I'm glad to see that the planning department and folks are looking for grants to help us get more trees in the township. We definitely need them and it definitely helps meet the goals that we laid out for a healthy ecosystem in the community.
Yeah, I concur with what other trustees have said and I really like this grant specifically. I like it because it's, you know, it's going to be used for some of the mobile home, if we can, for the mobile home parks and, you know, the communities that really we are not thinking about when we are planting trees or who cannot sometimes plant trees of their own. So I think this is a good thing that we are thinking of healthy ecosystem in an equitable way. So I'm happy for that.
Thank you very much. Just interesting, something else you have in the background, which is interesting. So Canton's tree efforts over the past two decades have focused on first removing or replacing the ash trees, which originated in Canton unfortunately, and then removing or replacing Bradford trees. And this immediate need for attention has limited Canton's ability to expand tree canopy into new areas. And Zach is our, he's great about this, you know, he's an expert on trees, so we really appreciate it. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7, consider approval of bid award for the Engineering Services for an ADA kayak launch.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a budget amendment listed in the Budget Implications and Account Number section of the RBA and award the bid of Engineering Services for the ADA accessible kayak launch to MCSA Group Incorporated for a total of $50,000.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster and Borninski. Canton Leisure Services has recently awarded a $50,000 grant from the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Design and Access Grant administered by the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan. In 2023, Canton Leisure Services applied for the grant to assist with the engineering and design of an ADA accessible kayak launch on the Lower Rouge River located at the Morton-Taylor Trailhead. This grant will help ensure that the Lower Rouge River Waterway provides an accessible entry point to the Lower Rouge River that connects all people and communities throughout the metro Detroit region safely. On May 23rd, the Canton Community Development Department advertised an RFP for the professional engineering services for the kayak launch. As a result, two bids were submitted, reviewed, and scored by a panel consisting of community development, municipal services, and finance staff. The final scores led to the recommendation of MCSA Group for a proposed cost of $36,761 with optional services of $14,239 added for a total cost of $50,000. It's a great job on these grants. Director Lepiver, do you want to add anything?
Just that we're excited, this is another great opportunity for us to add an amenity to one of our current treasures, the Lower Rouge Trail. It's one of kind of Canton's unheralded attractions, I think, but we're excited to do this with grant funds through the Ralph C. Wilson Fund and then this is hopefully to set us up to apply for more funds through the Recreation Passport Grants to actually build the thing. So this will be great. Includes a nice turnaround drop off for people to pull in, put their kayaks in. Director Norwood and his friends at, the Friends of the Rouge have done a nice job of helping to clear a nice stretch for kayaks to get into the Rouge, which, you know, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, I don't know if anybody would have thought would ever happen. But, so a lot of great things happening down there. We're really excited about this one.
Yeah, like you said, we, Dave has been working diligently with DPW and teams and clearing that pathway. And we did a kayak launch at the Rouge River event about a month ago. A lot of people participated, that was a lot of fun. Dave even fell in at the end. Any questions or comments? Steven?
Yeah, thank you. Great to see something come in that we can use and improve life here. I don't know if this is for you, Dave, or you, John, but so where, how far can you actually go if, if we had this?
Right now, it's cleared. It's from Morton-Taylor to Lily Road.
Okay.
So Friends of the Rouge has a water trail coordinator and I work closely with him along with, with, with the team from DPW. We're going to keep moving downstream and then look at upstream. Ideally, it'd be nice from Beck Road, from Beck Road to, to Wayne would be where we would like to have, because the Friends of Rouge has a master plan for a water trail from Canton all the way to Bellinger Park and River Rouge right off of Detroit River. So it's a funding question, a resource question, but certainly we're going to work in Canton to open it up as much as we can.
Are there sufficiently sized culverts to be able to go all the way down there if it was cleared?
Yeah, the, the nice thing about the Lower Rouge is where Yucca, the Ypsilanti Treatment Plant, it discharges anywhere from 15 to 25 million gallons of treated water every day. So there's a lot of flow for basically drinking water, almost drinking water to kayak on. So that makes Ken a prime candidate for this, because we're upstream, we catch this first first. So as you go downstream, there's, there's plenty of, plenty of spaces. There's already an open space in Inkster that I thought would never happen, that has happened now through a grant that Friends of the Rouge got. Dearborn has had opened from the Dearborn Hills Golf Course down to where the river connects to the main branch there at the Ford Estate, the Fairland Estate. And then Wayne has a section open from Commerce Court. There's a, there's a Wayne County building that you can go behind and launch and it goes to Goudy Park, which is at Wayne Road. So there's, and also Wayne County has also got a grant to put kayak launches at Vinoy Dorsey Park. So there's a lot of stuff going on, pieces to come together that you can rebuild a kayak or paddle all the way through. Motor City canoe and kayak, they want, they want to provide the service to residents all along the Lower Rouge.
Thank you.
Sorry, we went long on. I get excited about it.
Interesting, thank you.
The route is cleared. It took you about an hour and a half. I mean, right?
Yeah, it's about an hour and a half float from Morton-Taylor to, to Lily Road. So we're going to, we're going to get more cleared up between Public Works and Friends of the Rouge. And we work closely with Eagle, because there's things you can do, can't do on the river as far as opening up the river for paddling.
Gotcha, yeah.
We also had a little Beaver condo, kind of backed some things up there for a while too.
Yeah, there is a Beaver in, in Canton, yes.
Kate?
Yeah, I just, I think this is going to be a lot of fun and I'm going to have to figure out where to get a kayak.
Hit you on the river.
What else? Michael?
I remember in 2005, the writer for the Free Press, Joel Thurtel, took a kayak from Zag Island all the way up the Northern Rouge, 27 miles, and documented it, took photos, documented the trip, and made a book, Paddling the Rouge. I have it in my office. It's one of my favorite books. Because at that time, in 2005, it was almost unheard of that someone would even try to do that. And when you listen, when you read the book, it's a very difficult 27 miles. And, but it was substantially easier going up the Upper Rouge than the Lower Rouge. And so I'm really excited that Friends of the Rouge is getting serious about opening up the Rouge River for recreation. It's a testament to, I think, how far along our region has come and how much we have changed how we think about water, you know, watersheds, water systems, water resources, the amount of energy and time. the amount of energy and time we put into cleaning them. I think this would be a huge asset for Canton Township. And, you know, I'm excited we got the engineering grant and I hope we get further grant to actually build the thing. I'll try to put a canoe on it, we'll see if I can do it or not.
There's extras. We also just won, speaking of that, Canton was just awarded, you accepted the award for us because of our board meeting last time, it was called the...
Your Friend of the Rouge, yeah.
We got a community grant, a community award for Friends of the Rouge, so Canton is a friend of the Rouge.
For the work that Public Works has been doing on the river.
They recognized us for that, so thank you, good job. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G eight, authorize an extension to the agreement for the management of Fellows Creek Golf Course with Indigo Sports.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the township supervisor and township clerk to sign an extension to the agreement for the management of Fellows Creek Golf Course with Indigo Sports.
Support. Motion made by clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Snyderman. On February 10th, 2013, Canton entered into a management agreement with Billy Casper Golf, now known as Indigo Sports LLC, to manage and operate Fellows Creek Golf Course. On October 24th, 2017, the board approved RBA item G five to amend the contract to be renewed for another seven years from the effective date January 1st, 2018, with a township option for two successive periods of three years providing Indigo Sports met all the contract terms and conditions. These extensions do not include annual capital contributions that were included in the initial term. With Canton Legal Review, Canton Leisure Services negotiated a new contract with Indigo Sports to include a $10,000 annual capital contribution if both extension periods are exercised. Leisure Services is recommending extending the current contract for six years with Indigo Sports, which includes a $10,000 annual capital contribution from Indigo. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
We're just excited to continue this relationship. We've built a strong relationship with Indigo, they've done a great job of managing Fellows Creek and having a great success. And we're happy that they agreed to add the capital contribution in if we exercised both options at the same time.
And that it's open year-round.
Correct.
Yes, it is, people golf year-round. Steven?
Yeah, thanks. So the last one essentially was seven years, this one will be six years, no options for extension on that?
Correct, we're basically taking the two, three-year options and combining them into one, in exchange they're adding the capital contribution.
And do you have any idea what those contributions will be or any discussion on what's needed?
What they did, what we did with them for the last seven years, because there was the $10,000 capital contribution annually for the last seven years for the initial term, is they just wrote us a check for the $10,000 and then we followed our CIP plan and used that, those funds towards any of those projects.
Okay, great. Even better, thank you.
Tanya?
So what exactly do they do? They manage the golf club, like the golf course? What is exactly this, like I'm trying to understand why are they paying us $10,000?
So they do everything at the golf course, all the staff is theirs, they do all the maintenance, they basically do everything to run the course. And we pay them a management fee for those services. And then if they exceed their budget that they, that we approve, then they have the opportunity to make incentive portion for exceeding their goals. But there's also penalty clauses in there if they don't make their budget as well.
Thank you.
Else? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, consider approval of two purchase orders for the building monitor system and wiring at the summit on the park.
Ma'am supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order for sensors for the counting hardware at Summit on the Park for a total of $8,858.75 and a second purchase order to D2 Technologies for the wiring plus an added 10% contingency for a total of $10,978 and to approve the necessary budget adjustment.
Motion made by clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Borninski. Summit on the Park's participation and memberships continues to grow each year as Canton becomes more and more populated. In an effort to enhance safety, track data, and use our staff more efficiently, Canton Leisure Services is recommending purchasing nine counting systems and wiring to be installed at the Summit on the Park. This system is the same system used at the Canton Public Library. Will assist in counting people entering and exiting the facility at the five public entrance doors as well as the two gym entrances, the aquatic center and the fitness center. Canton Leisure Services recommends submitting two purchase orders, one for sensors for the hardware purchase totaling $8,858.75 and one for D2 Technologies for the wiring plus an additional 10% contingency totaling $10,978. The installation will be done internally by our facility maintenance staff, a budget transfer is necessary, and the budget is included in the capital outlay computers, professional and contract services. All right, Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, we're certainly excited about this project. It's going to free up, well, it's going to give us a lot of data that we currently don't have. The way that we track how many people are in the building right now is every 30 minutes to an hour, depending on availability of staff. We have our building monitor walk around and count the number of people in each of the rooms and then we track that data. But we don't, obviously that is not a very accurate system. This system will monitor and give us live data on how many people are in the building at any given time and then separate that data out of how many of those people are in the fitness center, how many of those people are in the gym, how many people are in the aquatic center. So help us, number one, it'll free up our building monitors to do other duties because they won't have to do these items. And as we get busier and busier, we have more potential for conflict and security issues throughout the building, so this will help with that. It'll also be help with public safety issues if there's ever a fire or other incident. We often get asked how many people are in the building and we really have no way of knowing that, but this will give us a live count at all times of how many people are in the building and give us a lot of data that we can also use for, to project staffing and other items going forward.
Any questions or comment? Tanya?
So can this, I'm assuming this data can be used if we are planning on, you know, reconfiguring the summit and where, you know, where we want to put people or how we want to do it? This is...
Absolutely, that's one of my first questions I had. If we were to be able to do any of the remodeling of the summit, we're going to, our plan is to have one entrance and exit, we can reallocate and move those sensors around to other areas so that we could monitor how many people are in the senior center or other different locations throughout the building. There's just a small, like a hundred dollar reconfiguration fee per sensor that we move.
Summer?
Not really a question, more of a comment. I would just say this feels like a no-brainer and I'm kind of surprised we didn't already have something like this, but yeah.
We have a person that goes through.
Yeah.
I have noticed that person.
There's a lot of other municipalities that are excited to see how this works because I don't know of any other community centers that have something like this at the time, currently. So several other municipalities are waiting for us to implement this, something that we experience frequently where we tend to be the leaders and other people follow. But once we see the success, then I think you'll start seeing these at other locations in southeast Michigan.
Awesome, thank you.
There goes another retirement job for me.
You were going to count the people?
I was looking forward to being a counter, a people counter.
You can be our backup.
All right.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G 10, consider approval of SolarWinds contract renewal for annual maintenance and technical support.
Ma'am supervisor, I move to approve the creation of a purchase order for $14,040 payable to SolarWinds for a one-year renewal of software support and maintenance services.
Support. Motion made by clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Snyderman. SolarWinds charges annual software maintenance fees to support the continuing development and operation of the SolarWinds and Service Desk application. The 2024 ASMV covers users licenses, maintenance, and upgrades. ITI is requesting to renew Canton's ASM agreement with SolarWinds, which expires on August 30th, for a one-year period from August 30th, '24 to August 30th, '25. And this is being paid, this is in our budget for maintenance and repair of software support account. So Director Begbu, do you want to add anything?
Not much to add, this is a renewal, but I'm here to answer any question.
Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G 11, consider request for approval to contract with Urban Wireless for broadband consulting services.
Ma'am supervisor, I move to approve the budget adjustment and to create a purchase order for $167,000 payable to Urban Wireless for broadband consulting services.
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Foster. ITI Department in conjunction with the Broadband Task Force is asking for authorization to contract with Urban Wireless for broadband consultation services for broadband strategic plan. This will facilitate the delivery of a comprehensive plan to guarantee highly scalable and reliable broadband and network services for all residents and business districts in Canton Township. Canton Township is significant retail, restaurant, healthcare, and entertainment sectors that serve a community of 100,000 residents. Many residents use internet to communicate with families, obtain education, work from home, use telehealth, and even control home appliances and utilities. Ford Road is a community's main retail corridor with hundreds of businesses utilizing the internet to communicate with customers, conduct transactions, and even provide wireless internet to customers. Canton Township utilizes internet to communicate with residents for public safety and provide important and relevant information. During COVID, we witnessed the importance of the internet in our daily lives as it has been the lifeline for many. With this in mind, our ITI Department published an RFP for qualified consulting firms to provide ongoing broadband planning and implementation guidance for the Charter Township of Canton, with focused attention on a redeveloping Ford Road as a major backbone of Michigan Avenue corridor planning. The consultant will work with township staff and the established township broadband task force to develop a working and long-term broadband strategic plan that includes cellular data coverage and overall broadband internet coverage. The scope of work includes analyzing existing public and private broadband facilities, identifying broadband needs and issues of residents, business, nonprofit organizations, and schools, and developing a framework for lasting infrastructure. So a recent community survey of broadband demonstrated the services to our residents and businesses have subpar connections that are well below the current FCC standards of 100 megabit per second download and 20 megabit per second upload despite purchasing higher quality services. Communication providers are also requesting us to place additional antennas, cabling, and towers in our communities so that their individual customer services improve without taking the needs of the entire township into consideration. So this will help us understand the community's current and future broadband infrastructure needs for our township and future economic and technological development. In this way, we can make educated and informed decisions on guiding what we allow throughout the township, similar to a zoning map for development. Director Begbu, do you want to add anything?
Actually, I do have the president of Urban Wireless here in case he wants to, if you have any question for him. Doug?
Okay, and the service costs $167,000, which the DDA is paying some, and then we have peg fees to pay the rest. Did you want to add anything? Doug?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a very exciting night for me for obvious reasons, but more than that, first of all, let me make a correction. The name of my company is Urban Wireless Solutions, so it's, if you look it up on the internet or whatever, and if you look for my website now, it's currently under reconstruction, so new exciting things to come. I started to say earlier, it's an exciting night for me because I've lived in this area my entire life. I grew up as a child in Garden City, moved to Westland, graduated from Levonia Churchill, lived in Dearborn and worked for five years and moved my family here over 20 years ago now. So I've seen Canton from when it really was just cornfields and two-lane roads and all that sort of thing and seen what it's grown up to be. In my career, I've had the opportunity to go around the country and visit many, many other communities, maybe similar to Canton in terms of growth and business and such, and see some of the new and exciting things that they've been able to do with technology. And being on the planning commission here in Canton and working with the master plan process, one of the overarching themes we've heard throughout is getting younger people to want to stay here, what young people want to see here, and that's right, and of course, what they want to see is, I use the word "cool" things all the time, but it's more than just that. It's about communication, it's about public safety, it's about just convenience. And I listened to some of the other projects you've discussed tonight, whether it's for recreation or the administration building or, and I think about all the exciting things that a robust, I mean, we use the term broadband kind of generically, but what I talk about is a robust telecommunications infrastructure that can make all these things work, make the community much more user-friendly and more enticing for those to want to come here and live here. So I don't have a lot of specifics to add other than what's in my proposal already. If you have specific questions you want to ask me, my team and I are anxious to get to work on this and really dig in to see what infrastructure already exists in Canton and what other recommendations we can make to enhance it and help bring delight for the township to make this that place where people really want to come, make it a destination. As I know, supervisor, you've mentioned that term in the past also. I know when the RFP came out, it was really talked about in the context of Ford Road and Michigan Avenue, but the other thing that I would throw in there too is what's starting now with Cherry Hill Village. There's lots of, there are going to be lots of opportunity there to do things with, not just wayfinding, but just how people get around and conduct business and social aspects of it and that sort of thing. So this is a very exciting time, we're anxious to work with the township on this and bring forth a plan that we hope you can sink your teeth into and really look forward to implementing.
Any questions or comments? Steven?
Hey Doug, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, questions that come to mind are, do you interface with the service providers like Comcast, AT&amp;T, and others on what their plans are? So...
So we interface with a lot of vendors. Comcast and AT&amp;T are very closed-mouth about what their plans are, which is what we've encountered in many communities. We just completed an extensive project with Ottawa County on their broadband plan and everyone and their brother came to the table except for Comcast and AT&amp;T and Charter. Similar situation we have going on in Ingham County right now. A lot of smaller providers who are much more, in my mind, are much more nimble, much more willing to work with the community. Don't get me wrong, they're in it to make a dollar too, but they seem to be willing to get down and dirty with the residents as far as what the needs are, talking about cost, customer service is huge. So in answer to your question about Comcast and AT&amp;T, yes, we've had some conversations, we do know people at those companies. They never really seem to want to have serious conversations with us, but we do have the ability to talk to people with those entities.
Do you have the ability, and Victor, I don't know if the other study showed this, you had some numbers in the RBA, but the ability to understand or determine the broadband speed that goes to maybe each of the neighborhoods or things like that?
So we won't go out and do that specifically, we have some, we have the ability to go out and do measurements for wireless and that sort of thing. A lot of the, a lot of the data that you're talking about has been done by survey and that sort of thing, much like what the township did, the same thing was done in Ingham County, the same thing was done in Ottawa County. Much of the data that's available and that is being relied upon unfortunately comes from the FCC and right now through the state of Michigan, through what's called MIHI, the Office of High-Speed Internet. And if you look at, you look at their map, which is, I really don't want to get into this discussion tonight about my feelings about this map, but if you look at that map, it'll show that Canton is very well-served and it concerns me because I know there are areas of the township that, yeah, sure, they have broadband or they have internet, but is it up to current standards? No. Even where I live in Canton, most of the neighborhoods in Canton are still served by copper. There's very little fiber going into, you know, some of the newer neighborhoods have fiber, but that's... fiber, but that's about it. And copper, township is over 50 years old now, and that's, that infrastructure does age, not very well either. But that is some of the analysis that we will undertake. We don't have mechanical means per se to do that, but we rely on people, meeting with people. Part of our hope here is to have, much like they did with the master plan, to meet with segments of the community, to talk about what their needs are, what their experiences are with the internet.
Okay. And then lastly, is any of this about cell signal?
It can be, yeah. I mean, as the Supervisor mentioned in her summary, there are wireless carriers who are looking to put sites here in Canton now. I mean, there are, relatively speaking, Canton doesn't have that many cell sites. I mean, the only ones here on this side of the township are right here at the administration building. There's one down at the high behind high velocity. There's a couple along the ITC corridor, but actually some of the carriers are removing their equipment off those things. So yes, there will be that analysis as well, and we will meet with those carriers as well. We have, I mean, that's, to be quite transparent, that's mostly my background in this industry as I worked for Verizon for many years and I was an attorney doing real estate and zoning for Verizon. So I was involved in getting this site here at the township hall when Verizon went on it. But yes, that'll be looked at because we, as a company, we believe, everyone talks about broadband in terms of fiber, but it really needs to be more than that because you can't, from a cost perspective, sometimes logistics, you can't get fiber everywhere. And in a developed community, not everyone might want fiber for the cost. They want, they want something that's economical. We hope to present to the township things that give the residents a choice. Both Verizon and T-Mobile have pretty economical fixed wireless broadband plans right now. And I know there's, I know there are doubters about fixed wireless and its delivery ability and broadband, but I can tell you it's improving all the time. So not every, there's not a one-size-fits-all solution to every community's problem. Everyone's different, but we do espouse that if you have multiple solutions and you find the best one that's in a given area or again, gives people a choice as to what to do. So the short answer to your question is yes, wireless will be a component of this study.
All right, thank you.
Summer?
Hi Doug.
Hi Summer.
So I'm excited about this, especially when it comes to thinking about broadband access in our parks and in Cherry Hill Village. So I'm excited to see what comes out of this and where we can build and make Canton more attractive for younger people to hang out. As you know, they don't go anywhere without the little device in their hand and they get really ticked off when they don't get a good signal to post on Snapchat or Instagram or whatever. So I think this is a great thing to bring to this community and I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of it.
I'm excited about this, as I mentioned. The only regret I have about this in terms of timing is I wish we could have done this really in parallel with the master plan because I think both of these, both of these documents will work together very well. I also think a big component of this, of what comes out of this will relate to economic development for the township. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of benefits to this, looking into this, and I, again, I'm excited about it and I'm really excited to see what, and hopefully that everyone participates that we want to, that we want to talk to and that's right, because we do want, we do want people to talk to us because we want to hear what people's real-life experiences are as well. So that helps us target areas and that sort of thing.
One of the things that we did with the master plan process is talking to kids in schools.
Yep. Yeah, and you mentioned that, and actually we'd like to talk to the school district itself too, because obviously they have significant facilities here in the township. And I know they have their own fiber in the township, but you know, it's their fiber, but there's, they have needs as well. So it's, it'll definitely be a cooperative process is what it will be.
Thank you.
Yeah, so to start off it, this is a comment. When I looked at this project, I was like, we do a lot of, you know, a lot of governments do a lot of studies and like what actually comes out of it and are we doing a good investment in doing this? And I had a long conversation with Victor this morning because I'm part of the technology community and we have been talking about, you know, the connectivity of this for the last two years. And I was just wondering what would come out of it and Victor was talking about how, you know, you are going to, this would result in some sort of a, kind of ordinances in the future and working with, on top of the master plan. And I think that kind of gives a perspective because I have talked to a lot of residents, especially people with home businesses, like that they have a major issue. And I have talked to my neighbor who has a home business and he's like, a group of his friends had this conversation and they were talking about the major issue of the lack of connectivity in this community, the broadband, the fiber and all that. So I think we are, I would say we are a, you know, kind of a prosperous community here and we, if this is the kind of infrastructure we need, and especially on Michigan Avenue, you know, a lot of communities have business parks and things like that. And this, I think, will, if we can build, if we can understand what we lack, we can build over it or we can work with the providers. And that is my main objective here, like to like help. I think not only talking to the businesses that are like the brick and mortar businesses, but even having conversations like town halls with people who have home businesses and have conversations with that, I think that would help really understand.
I run my business out of my house.
Yeah, so you know, having conversation with people like you is important because that is what we understood during COVID is the lack of connectivity in the community.
And you know, going back to one of trustee Steinman's comments about Comcast is, and my service is Comcast, and I know what I pay for, and I'm lucky if I get anything close to that every month. So, but fortunately I haven't had a vision, I can still do my job and that sort of thing, but I would like it to be better. To your point though, that there are so many, what comes out of this? I know what, I have a good idea of what our end product is going to be, but ultimately what comes out for the township will be up to the powers that be eventually as to what they want to implement. But yes, new ordinances could come out of this regarding zoning and placement of infrastructure, other revenue streams to the township could come out of this, other development, other development, other services. So you know, things that benefit education, medical services, and you're right, so many people are working from home now too. But I can tell, in the years I've been in the business, I've been able to establish a very robust network of companies and we're not aligned with anyone and we take great pride in staying neutral in that regard because we want to bring the best solutions to our customers. But we're aligned with a lot of companies that do different things and bring different services to the, to the table. And I can tell you already that I've had them reach out to me knowing that we've talked, had conversations with Canton and just for them knowing where I live. And they're excited about the dynamic here in our location. I mean, we're in an ideal location being halfway between Ann Arbor and Detroit and we have 270, we have two interstate highways going through our community and the ability to get here and there is at a major airport right near us. So there's lots of good things about wanting to work here and I think that, I think companies will be excited to come and develop further technology here. I'm anxious to really dig into this project and see what, for my own benefit too. I mean, I want to, you know, I want to see, I'd like to see my family stick around here and that sort of thing. So I, none of this will probably benefit you and I, but our kids and their kids maybe. It's, hopefully that's what it'll, that's what it'll be.
Anyone else, any other comments on the board? Michael?
Yeah, I'll just point out that this is a, an excellent partnership with the Downtown Development Authority. I'm grateful for them appropriating some money for this. And then I think this is also additionally a good use of the cable fees, which is not coming out of the general fund. So I think it's a, it's a good use of that money and it's a good partnership.
And a strategic plan will help us go for funding also.
Yeah, I, you know, I know everyone in this is talking about BEAD money. I mean, I know that's the big acronym that comes out of everybody, everyone's mouth when it comes to broadband right now. And I'm not going to tell you that's not an option, but I also don't want people to get so excited about, I want to be realistic too because of what Canton is already. But we'll look at, we'll dig in, we'll get the opening of that application window is coming up quickly. I don't know how much we'll be able to get done before that time comes up, but we'll definitely look into it and see what kind of opportunities there are. But I can also tell you, there'll be other grant opportunities, maybe not as large as that one, but there'll be other grant opportunities for other aspects of a project for infrastructure as time goes along, so.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you everybody, I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Item G 12. Consider Approval of Updated Elections Operations Policy and Inspector Pay Adjustment.
Supervisor, I move to approve the updated elections operations policy as outlined and to approve the additional inspector rates of election day rate addition and early voting election, or inspector partial shift at 1:35, end of night stipend $25.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. In July of '22, Township Board approved the Elections Operation Policy that created many incentives for staff to work on Election Day. With the passage of Proposal 22-2, the need for election workers expanded outside of Election Day. The township is now required to facilitate nine additional days of in-person voting along with the ability to reprocess the absentee ballots. These new changes have created a need for an updated Elections Operation Policy. The updated policy has been reviewed and approved by the Mayor Commission along with TPOAM. Township has completed three elections in '24 and have found that the rates for inspectors need to be updated to fill all types of shift work. Addition of a $25 stipend for one inspector for each precinct, opposing party of the chair, to return to the township hall to be received. Most election day shifts are approximately 15 hours and an additional partial shift, more than seven hours but less than 15, is requested at half the shift price, $135. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add anything?
I am here to answer any questions.
Okay, great, let me see. All right. Any questions from the board? All those in favor of the motions, what?
I was just going to make a comment. Yeah, the Election Commission met and discussed these changes. I personally am very glad that we're going to enable volunteers to, well, not volunteers, but inspectors and people who work the elections to work a half-day shift because I think it will really help us get more people involved. Sometimes it's hard to fulfill all our, all our spots that we have available. And I mean, I know I would think twice about working 15 hours, but seven, eight, nine hours is a lot more doable.
Don't say that too loudly because that'll double the amount of people I have to recruit to work the elections, but it is a good tool to have.
Yes.
Don't discourage people from working that 15-hour day. Civic duty, it's really important.
Well, both, both are important, I think. If you can do 15 hours, that's great and you'll get a lot more money. But if you want to be involved and to, you know, help out during an election, but you can't commit to the 15 hours, I think the half-shift is a great opportunity.
I think it's the clerk's responsibility to make it so fun that they want to stay for the second shift.
It's a 24-hour day for me, so sometimes it's a 36-hour day, so it's not, it's a good time.
And the end of the shift, you know, people coming back and helping, that's, that's important too. That's a good stipend to have for people.
But Michael, your mandate is to make it fun.
Yes.
Always fun.
To make it fun for the inspectors.
Oh, wow.
Not for you.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, we have public comment for three minutes. Anybody online, there's three people online. If you'd like to make public comment, please raise your hand electronically. Okay. Anyone else, anyone in the room like to make public comment for three minutes? Please, okay, go to the podium, go to the podium, sir. State your name and your address, please.
Hello, good evening. My name's George Cordy. I live at 40465 Bay Harbor Lane. I'm also the Board President of the Condole Association for Links at Fellows Creek. Just quick comments about the trash hauler. Been very frustrated for almost a month or the last know-how that you provided. At that time I attended it and I was told that we would have somebody come to our Condole Association to look at it because we have single garage doors and double garage doors. One thing, I forget what the gentleman's name was, John, what he didn't mention was the size of the containers, 95 gallons, 65 gallons. This 95 gallons is probably going to be very, very difficult for our single-car, single-car garages. I finally, I called almost a month, it took over a month for someone finally to get in touch with me. Mr. Norwood finally did return my call, finally got with him and I talked to him. And of the last three, four, five days, I've learned that, I was told we're getting 65 gallons and come out on the news media saying the HOAs approved this. Well, we were never told that we could get 65 or 95. I think he, Mr. Norwood, said, okay, we'll go with the 65. Most condos I think are getting 65-gallon containers. That's probably going to be good for the single-car garages for us. The one I worry about are, we have some families that are, you know, four, five, six people, garbage is going to be overflowing for a 65-gallon can. The other thing that I'm a little upset is if we want to switch to, we got to pay $125. I don't think that's fair to the condos. We would have to, or the co-owner would have to take that into consideration. I don't know if you guys thought about this when you went to condos. I understand I just found out, or when I talked to him, that I didn't realize he had 270 condos here, or between condos and HOAs. When you guys discussed this with, or did you discuss it with Priority Waste at all? How you were going to attack condos? Because I know we're not the only association that's going to have difficulty with, between the two kinds of containers. And the last thing that I'm a little bit worried about more, got more educated tonight about Priority Waste taking over GFL. I think the same thing happened, the GFL is going to happen to Priority Waste, they got too big, too quick. And they're, it's going to, I think it's going to come down and hurt, I hope it doesn't hurt Canton, but it just seems like, I lived in Garden City and I just found out there, my daughter-in-law told me that GFL is taking, or I mean, Priority Waste is taking over Garden City. And that's the concern that I could remember, I was a former city council member there and I can remember, one of the hardest things for new people is making waste haul decisions. And it's very difficult because it's a tough, tough things to go through the negotiations. But I just, it was more frustration about communication, I can't emphasize that more than enough, and not, you know, just get back with us. And I thank you, Mr. Norwood, and I think Emma too as well, finally. But it was just that it was frustrating and now, so now we're trying to put out the word and I believe from what Mr. Norwood said that the 65 gallons aren't going to come till mid-August. So now we're going to start advertising and putting out there that it's garbage is normal, pick up until they come. But I just worry about when they do show up, that somebody's going to put them out there, if they happen to get them before mid-August. That's the only thing I can, you know, definitely worried about. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. You could speak to Mr. Selmy or Mr. Norwood after the meeting also. Next, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Heather Smiley. I live at 17105 Greenge in Riverview, Michigan. And I couldn't have asked for a better segue because you were talking about the voting. The reason I'm here today is because I want to introduce myself. I'm running for US Congress in the 6th Congressional District and I would be representing your area. So you'll see me on your ballot, which you already have sent out the absentee ballots. I actually briefly lived in Canton several years ago and before it got all developed, I actually had a horse off of Cherry Hill. So there was a farm out there that I had a horse on. Anyway, I wanted to take a minute to introduce myself and explain a little bit about my background. I actually spent 32 years at Ford Motor Company. I actually spent 32 years at Ford Motor Company and I worked in global business, so I had global responsibility for pretty much all the continents. And one of the things that I specialized was in data and analytics, so when we had the discussion about, you know, the, when you were talking about at the summit and the monitoring and stuff, I was all over that. So I'm one of the people that likes to use data to make data-driven decisions and be smart about it and help things function better. One of the things that I'm running on is right now, the people in the sixth congressional district and quite frankly, throughout the United States, everybody's struggling because the economy's not doing, doing well. The businesses and obviously the households, the inflation and different things like that. So one of the things for my priority is obviously protecting our civil rights, but also looking at a balanced budget, making sure that our, our, some of the services like social security and things right, right now are at risk, quite frankly, through the congressional budget office. If you look at any of the reports, the country's not really doing, it's, it's not really in a good position. And thirdly, at a very broad level, one of the things that I want to do is look at our safety in terms of our national sovereignty and our military. As, as we all know, everybody talks about the southern border, but we have the border right across the river in Detroit and they catch people all the time and we've seen increases throughout the state of Michigan in terms of public safety. So those are priorities for me and like I said, I, I do have roots in Canton although it was several years ago. One of the things that I've noticed is that Canton is really thriving in terms of the business district and one of the things that, from a federal level, that I can help support the people, which inherently generates more business and revenue for the municipalities. And in terms of the municipalities, I know oftentimes, you know, you were talking earlier about grants and everybody's excited to get those. One of the things that from a municipal perspective is revenue sharing. You'll get, you'll get the, you'll get the, you know, the occasional grants and, and different influx of, of cash, but gosh, wouldn't it be great if you had a different revenue sharing agreement so you, your base budget was a little bit higher all the time and you didn't have to rely on as much grants for funding things? So anyway, I wanted to thank you for your time and I will be hanging out after the meeting today. And for those people online or in the room here, if you'd like to, you can visit my website, which is Smiley for Congress, F O R Congress, and also my social media sites, Heather Smiley for Congress. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just please.
Hi there, everyone. My name is Amara Ansari. Thanks to the township for their time today. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm running for Canton Township trustee. As we all know, Steven Snyderman is retiring. I am running to replace his seat along with the other wonderful elected officials here. I'm also on the record funnier than Steven, so all the jokes he's been cracking don't have anything on me.
True, actually.
So I just wanted to take a minute to just say hi and also just to let everyone know that I'm running as a Democrat. And some of the things that I'm really concerned about and things that I really care about are, number one, making sure that we can build that bridge between the information that our community has and how the township shares it. The other thing I'm really interested in is making sure that we can build out our infrastructure and clean climate energy initiatives here in the township. I have lived in Canton for the past eight years and I have been doing community organizing work since I moved here. I have a background in public policy and community organizing and campaigning and, you know, you can visit my website, amaraforcanton.com or any of my social media pages, Friends to Elect Amara Ansari. And yeah, just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself. Thanks.
Thank you. Michael? Michael has a public comment.
It's not about being a candidate, though. There's a public comment from a resident who has asked me to read it for them. Thank you for offering galt cart transportation at Independence Park during events, but I would rather see paths between soccer fields and have the walkway, the sidewalk complete. And that is a comment from David.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Great. Okay, thank you. So now staff comment. So, John? Oh, did you have, you had another one? Okay.
Got the same text.
Received a similar one. Yeah, just want to plug our Thursday Night Live concert series, week two will be Thursday night. We got the Killer Flamingos coming, which are very popular, so great opportunity to see them in the perfect setting. And then on Friday night, we'll have our annual movie camp out night, so we encourage families to come out. You don't have to camp, you can just come and watch the movie and take part in the activities, but we'd love to have you stay overnight as well. The movie is Trolls, the Trolls movie, the most recent one. And then on Saturday is our Pride Outside event, also in Heritage Park at the amphitheater, 6:30 to 8:30. So we hope to see everybody out in a very busy weekend here.
Thank you. Greg, did you have anything? Victor?
Well, I just want to say thank you to all the elected officials for understanding the need for the work that is about to commence as it relates to broadband. It's really crucial that the township do this and that we get it right for the future.
Thank you. Chief Chad or Chief Chris? No? Dave? Emma or Patrick? No? Okay, how about board comments? Kate?
Just want to say I'm glad to be back and COVID-free. So I missed you all.
Missed you too. Steven?
As the person sitting next to you, I'm glad you're COVID-free as well.
That's why the chairs are between us.
And no, just happy summer, everyone, and enjoy hopefully the good weather that comes after, I guess, this hurricane that is moving through, hopefully with little or no damage to our community.
Anya?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm excited about the Pride event on Saturday. I'm, as a cultural commission member, I'll be volunteering there. And you know, I've seen a lot of, in the month of June, seen a lot of neighboring communities talk about their first Pride event and we have been, I would say we have been kind of the pioneers in the Western Way inside for having, recognizing this and celebrating Pride. And I just wanted officially to wish my husband a happy anniversary today.
Thank you. Happy anniversary, guys.
Happy anniversary.
Summer?
I will say that the resolution that we passed early, earlier today was very moving. I know my mom heart broke a little bit when you told us earlier this year that that young man's heart stopped at the summit playing basketball. And when I read the article that he was doing okay, I was, I was relieved, but to see him walk in here on a cane, that was, that, that did my heart good. And to see the young people that stepped up and supported him and made sure that they saved his life. One of them said that they do the training, but they never think they're going to have to use it, but they were well-prepared. So thank you to everyone who made that happen and made sure that those, that the folks who work at the summit were prepared for an incident like that.
Right, thank you. Michael?
Everything Summer just said, that was pretty powerful. We, one, you know, happy belated 4th of July to everybody. That was, you know, a special time. I absolutely, I know people have a lot of feelings about the fireworks, but every time I hear them go off, I just think about how happy I am to live in America and just feel really patriotic and so, super geeked, 4th of July was a, was a good time. One thing that did happen leading up to 4th of July is we had the 40th day before the election, which is a pretty big day in the world of voting because that is the day, the deadline, that we mail out absentee ballots. Canton has mailed out 17,400 absentee ballots so far and we have received 2,600 of them back, which means people have already voted for the August 6 election, which is still a month away. One of the things that's fascinating that we're getting back or hearing from some of the, some of the voters is a lot of questions about the content of the ballot. There's two proposals. One is a parks millage renewal, that is pretty self-explanatory. The second proposal is Proposal A, which is an auditor selection amendment. And it's, the question is that shall Wayne, Wayne County Charter, Section 3.119E, be amended in part to allow the county independent external auditor selected by competitive bid to serve for a term of three years or more? And what I'm hearing from a lot of folks right now who live in Wayne County is, what does that mean? What is the current term for the auditor? What is an independent auditor? And traditionally, the government has a pretty neutral, neutral stance when it comes to talking about what is on the ballot and what is not on the ballot and we don't advocate for candidates and things like that. Commissioner Dobbs did put some, some information out there about this. The current term in the Wayne County Charter is eight years. It is competitively bid, so if you do win that bid, you are required, you, you get the, you get, you are the independent auditor for eight years until that eight years expires and then it gets bid again. And so this would allow the Wayne County Commission to go out for bid every three years potentially. So that's, I think, the proposal and what the intent of it is. So obviously do your research, check out Section 3.119E of the Wayne County Charter. It's my favorite part of the charter. It's a joke, no one ever reads the charter of Wayne County. But, but you know, do your research on it obviously for yourself, but I've just been getting so many questions about just this specific thing that I figured I would just address it tonight. But that's it. Make sure, you know, early voting is going to be starting in, towards the end of, end of July and then you also have election day, the second, sorry, the first Tuesday after the first Monday in August. And that's when the polls will be open for those 13 hours, 15 hours is the work shift, but 13 hours is how long the polls are open. But yeah, we're in, we're in voting season and it's exciting.
Thank you. And Summer, and when his mother got up and spoke too about that day when she heard that her son, miracle that happened. Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting's adjourned.